Does something in the house?
No.
I didn't think so. I can't get that connected.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January ninth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Westminster Planning Commission. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak needs to sign up at the back of the room. And if you have done so, that's great. If you need to sign that document, please see the secretary over here if you have not had a chance to do it yet. At this time, I'd like to call the roll.
Commissioner Zhang.
Present.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Mayo.
Here.
Commissioner Bosher.
Here.
Chair Bosher.
Here.
Commissioner Calling.
Oh, not excused.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomacek.
Here.
And Commissioner Torres.
Not excused.
Thank you, roll call complete.
Thank you. We have a quorum present, and I believe the first alternate Commissioner Zhang will be voting with us tonight. We have a special presentation tonight to recognize the service of the outgoing Vice Chair Joe McConnell. And do we have a presentation?
We do. Mr. McConnell, if we could ask you to come up to our podium here, and our commission staff and our city staff will join you up there for a little send off, please.
Will this count against my five minutes at the podium?
Yes, you will be timed, thank you.
Please start with your name and address.
I can't say that.
He can't say what he's thinking.
So in recognition of twenty years of service to the city, City Reddeman, we would like to honor you with a free sign that we have made with your name on it, it's got your length of service, and your name on it. Now, the back, we've had everybody sign it with some well wishes. Thank you for your service.
And other comments.
That's why it's on the back.
And another part is, this is your name, your name plate for your, your seat, and feel free to wear that anytime you come to our meeting.
Don't rob any banks with that badge, please.
My neighbor's on the street and surprised tomorrow morning. Well, I appreciate this, thank you very much.
Your service was greatly appreciated, Joe.
And I've learned something from each and every one of you guys over the years.
And me from you.
Yep, same from us.
And before I do go, thank you, Stephanie, and Jim, it's good to see you again. I remember you, you have the same amount of energy you had a little bit earlier, and I just wanted to see you back, so thanks again, appreciate it, Jacob.
Yeah, good thing, Joe.
Thanks again.
Thanks for your service, Joe.
All right. Have fun tonight, Joe.
Oh, yeah. With the departure of Vice Chair McConnell, we need to elect a new Vice Chair.
Before you, before you start, I would like to address y'all myself, just for a few seconds. As you all know, twenty twenty three was very challenging for us, and I wanted to personally thank you because I sat in Jen's seat, a number of other folks did, and we weren't anywhere near as well equipped as she is to do this job. They can all agree that she's a superstar. So thank you for being patient with me and with all the other folks at Pinch Hit, and thank you for all the grace you showed us, so we do appreciate you.
And thank you for all your help, Mr. Gurman. Okay, at this time, we need to elect a new Vice Chair. We will accept nominations at this time, and Jen, do they need to verbally or do it written?
Yes, please, we'd like to have the, any nominations, whether that be a self nomination or another commissioner making a nomination. Go ahead and cue up your mic and make that nomination, and then the chair will follow up with a confirmation of you accepting that nomination.
Okay, so the floor is open. Commissioner, excuse me, Dunn.
Too many things going on.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Dave Carpenter.
Thank you.
I accept, thank you.
No other nominations? Okay, then we have one nomination, Commissioner David Carpenter for Vice Chair. Can we just do this by voice vote?
No, actually, you'll see at your, I'm sorry, Greg, did you want to go ahead? There's a, a piece of paper at your seats with everybody's, all the commissioners' names.
So when there's only one nomination, will Mr. Carpenter, Commissioner Carpenter, will be elected by acclamation, so we don't need to vote or do anything else?
Okay.
We might need him to move, though.
Right.
No, I'm kidding, whatever, whatever works.
Okay, that means you have to get one of these other computers working, so you may want to just stay there. But. All right, so, welcome, Vice Chair Carpenter.
And. Thank you very much, commission members and Chair Bosher, appreciate, really appreciate it, and I, I promise to live up to the high ideals from our past departing Vice Chair McConnell.
Yes, he set a high bar. All right. At this time, we will consider the preceding meeting's minutes. Do we have a? Do we have an approval? Or a nomination, not nomination, a?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. And the next item on the agenda is the consideration of the Mandalay Property PDP. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do, Chairperson, we do have a presentation, I'm ready if you are.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kaza, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Jacob Kaza, I am a senior planner with the city's planning division. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices, and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to three hundred and twenty-nine property owners, addresses, and two HOAs within one thousand feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here's a map showing the location of the Mandalay Gardens Track Ten, the parcel is outlined in red. The property is located at the southeast corner of Wadsworth Parkway and West One Hundred and Eighth Avenue. The PDP will facilitate the development of a commercial use on the hard corner and an employment flex development on the remainder of the property. One vehicle access point is shown on West One Hundred and Eighth Avenue, and two vehicle access points are shown on Dover Street. A detention pond is planned on the south edge of the property at the low point, and will enhance the required landscaping setback adjacent to the Lau Buddhist Temple. Section eleven five fourteen of the Westminster Municipal Code contains ten criteria that are to be considered when reviewing rezonings and preliminary development plans. Staff finds that the Preliminary Development Plan Amendment generally, sorry, just Preliminary Development Plan, generally meets these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Several examples of these criteria are that the PDP is compatible and harmonious with existing public and private development in the surrounding area, streets, drives, access points, and turning movements are designed in a safe and convenient manner, and that the PDP will not preclude future public land dedications. For those selected example criteria, staff finds that the PDP is compatible with existing developments in the surrounding area, that the access points are designed in a safe and convenient manner, and that the PDP will not preclude future land dedications. Staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing and recommend that City Council approve the PDP. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the applications would meet the city's strategic plan priority of ensure that Westminster offers a diverse range of amenities and activities for residents, businesses, and visitors that honor the city's history and support the arts, parks, recreation, open spaces, and libraries as met by facilitating new development and creating more bike infrastructure. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well, and thank you for your attention. We, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Is the applicant ready to present? It looks like they are. It's on.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the commission for allowing us to present tonight, my name is Mark Ventarella, I'm with Altus Properties, we're the developer of the property. I'm going to give a very brief overview of Altus Properties and then hand off to my colleague, Phil, who will walk through the actual development itself in a little more detail. Altus Properties is a sixty-year-old real estate investment and development firm with offices in St. Louis, Missouri, Minneapolis, Minnesota, and here in Denver, Colorado. We have, own and operate all four major asset types, multifamily, industrial, office, and retail in those cities. Our primary investment geographic area is in between the coasts, basically Salt Lake City to St. Louis, we stay out of the coastal markets. We find the most value in targeting investment opportunities in areas that have high demand and barriers to entry or limited supply, which is what we see here in Westminster, where there's a high demand for the product type we're planning to develop with a significant undersupply. Altus Properties owns, operates, and leases all of its, basically all of its real estate holdings. This particular project kind of fits right into that middle-of-the-curb food group where we would look to bring the project to commission, achieve approval, develop the project, own and operate it for its investment cycle, and then dispose of it to another operator at the end of its life. That's generally Altus Properties, I'll hand over to Phil Larger for a little more detail on the actual development.
Appreciate that, Mark, and then thank you, everyone. How do I? Okay, perfect, is there any way you could go to the next slide? Next slide, please. So, you know, we're, we're excited to present West One O Eight, which is a, you know, seventy-five-thousand-square-foot flex industrial building in conformance with the Employment Flex zoning. It, you know, we're anticipating this rendering to look, you know, and feel as the development is proposed, you know, so kind of, next slide, please, Jacob. So, you know, our development is really the seven point one five acres, you know, and then one point two two acres of commercial on the corner, which we would be, you know, plating, but that would be a separate submission. We are anticipating building the flex product in summer of two thousand twenty-three, if so approved, and, you know, this is a high-demand product, as Mark alluded to, and, you know, consistent with the product across the street that St. John's has built. This would be about a forty-foot-tall building with a twenty-eight-foot clear. We are proposing roughly twenty thousand square feet of office on the front half of the building. You know, this would be a speculative build, so we don't have a tenant in tow at the moment, but, you know, working to, to do that, and, you know, we will be, you know, planning on dedicating about three-quarters of an acre and enhancing the right-of-ways of One O Eighth, Dover Street, as well as, you know, along Wadsworth Parkway, a sidewalk, so kind of walking through on One O Eighth, we would be adding an additional lane heading eastbound, along with a bike path on the southbound property and an eight-foot sidewalk, and then on Dover Street, we would be widening it to be consistent with the north side of Dover Street and improving, you know, the functionality there, so we would have a left-turn lane as well as a straight on Dover Street, and then a, a kind of a, a southbound lane on Dover Street with two access points. We've articulated the two access points on Dover Street to have separate entrances for, you know, both vehicular traffic for the employees as well as, you know, box trucks, et cetera, on the southern property, to really kind of make a delineation between the, the two uses and make it as enhanced as possible for future commercial development. And, you know, we are also, you know, putting an eight-foot sidewalk along Wadsworth Parkway and handling water flows of, you know, from Walnut Creek to the north side, south. So we, you know, very excited about this project, we think it, you know, fits in conformance, you know, with the Employment Flex, you know, the, the FAR on this project is about point two four with thirty percent landscaped and open space, and then two point three per thousand parking, which accommodates, you know, about a hundred and eighty-nine stalls is what we're proposing, and that is, you know, dovetails well into the twenty thousand square feet of office that we're proposing. So that's kind of the high level, you know, of the entirety of the site, so it's a nine-point-one-acre, three-quarters dedicated to the city, seven point one five would be what we would handle on the development side, along with, you know, the horizontal infrastructure, you know, on pad-ready and the commercial, plus, you know, all the, the off-site site improvements. With that, you know, like to open up to any questions.
I have a quick question for you, when do you anticipate breaking ground?
So we anticipate breaking ground summer of two thousand twenty-three, depending on timeline, it could be, I mean, twenty-four.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to nail down, thanks. Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for including the site plan in here, that really kind of helps, helps us understand what you're looking to do with, along with the PDP, which obviously doesn't require that level of detail, but that really does help. Just a couple of quick questions on that. I do like that the, or a comment and then a couple of questions, I like that we have a right-in, right-out on the Hundred Eighth there, and we're not trying to, people aren't trying to make a left turn there, I think that would be a, could be a potentially dangerous situation, for sure. The, one thing I see on there, it doesn't look like, it looks like you've got your new sidewalk on Dover, but it doesn't look like we've got it going up to crossing Dover to access that St. John's development, or the, across the street that you were just discussing. Were you planning on creating that sidewalk connection for, for that pedestrian, or was that, were you told not to do that?
We were, it, it ties up into, you know, Hundred Eighth, but we don't have a dedicated cross, and we're not, you know, that was not a recommendation given to us.
Okay, all right, well, may, I don't know what that sort of cross pollination is, but that there'll be, and knowing that this, especially with a commercial development that it looked like it was Quick Trip that you had also in the packet, so.
Yeah, they're, they're the owner of the land currently, and, you know, they will be submitting separately.
They'll be submitting a separate one, okay.
Correct.
That's, that's fine, and, and the other question I had, I know the residents of the neighborhood to the south of there are concerned about, well, on previous projects have been concerned about cut-through traffic. Have you thought about how you're going to try to manage some of that with, with this, that you're just going to own this and lease it out, correct? But are you going to work with the tenants to try not to have their employees cutting through from Old Wadsworth on Hundred Sixth that up Dover Street and take in the Hundred Eighth?
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly, you know, have those conversations with tenants as they, you know, fill the project, and, and, you know, kind of guide them to hopefully not utilize that.
Yeah, it's, knowing how narrow it is and how rural that, that unincorporated enclave is, that would be very useful. Okay, those were, those are really all my comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
At this time, I'd like to open the public testimony portion of this hearing. Anyone who has wished to speak could have signed up, and Jen, did we get some sign-ups?
We do have one name, I don't have it in front of me, but anyone would like to come on up and speak, please do so, approach the podium, just state your name and property address, please, and go ahead.
I'm Robin Sherman, I live at one oh nine seven seven Balsam. Hey, Dave, congratulations. In the last meeting last August, they said that this is going to be a gas station. Is it a gas station and a charging station, or just a gas station?
Jacob, can we have the applicant reply to that, or should we wait until?
It's probably best you wait for her five minutes to, and have the applicant respond afterwards.
And my next question is, why is it, why do you think it's safe to have a gas station on the flight path to a local airport? Because all you need is one plane that ends up getting parked in that gas station, and you're going to have a big boom, and that's going to incorporate all of the residents around them. Another thing, the traffic on Hundred and Eighth right now is horrible. It's a two-lane road, they're going to widen Hundred and Eighth between Wadsworth Bypass and Dover. Well, what about between Dover and Old Wadsworth? Because you get a whole lot of traffic on Hundred and Eighth and between, I live in Green Knolls, and between like four and six, you can't turn left coming out of Green Knolls and turn left onto Hundred and Eighth. You're taking your life in your hands, there's that much traffic. It, it seems like their, their concern is only for this little quadrant, they're not concerned about the traffic on, that's going to end up going down Old Wadsworth on Old Hundred and Sixth and up Dover, and all, that's a very residential area, it's, it's rural, it's very narrow, it's two-lane, as is Hundred and Eighth, and it's going to be, it's going to be horrible. There's also, there is an S curve on Old Wadsworth that's already a dangerous position to be in once you're going through there. All that traffic, there's going to be traffic coming down Old Wadsworth that's going to go to this new industrial area with their hundred and eighty-nine parking spaces, and that's only going, you're, you're going to have, you're going to have an accident there, and somebody's going to get, end up getting killed. And we need to, that needs to be addressed long before these guys put in any gas station. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amanda Keel, I live at one one eight six one West Hundred and Sixth Place, that is further west than the part of Hundred and Sixth that would be directly impacted. Like the speaker before me, I came because I'm very concerned that this plan is going to increase traffic significantly in the area without having a safety plan for a road that is already highly overworked and already unsafe. That section of Hundred and Eighth between Wadsworth and Wadsworth is very narrow, it has driveways on it, it has a school bus stop, it has mail stops and mailboxes, trash trucks stop along there, it's the best way between the Highway Thirty-Six bike path and the countryside neighborhood where I live, so it gets a lot of bicycle traffic, even the occasional pedestrian. And I love that the plan includes a little bit of bike lane, but I came to ask all of you here at Planning to please consider the safety of that entire section of Hundred and Eighth along with this development plan. I'm not against putting something in there, I think that, as the developer stated, it's actually a reasonable use of that plot that's in keeping with several other recent developments along Hundred and Eighth, but nothing has been done to address the safety of that section of Hundred and Eighth, and it really needs to have a bike lane the entire way through that would be wide enough to also accommodate mail truck stops, school bus stops, and trash truck stops. Possibly even consider lowering the speed limit, guys, I don't know if you can do that, but all I really came to ask for is, please make some safety improvements to Hundred and Eighth. The speaker before me is very much right that that section of Old Wadsworth through there is also too narrow and dangerous, but it does not get the same volume of traffic, so please, please make some safety improvements to Hundred and Eighth Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Trudy Forsythe, and I live at eighty-four sixty West Hundred and Sixth. So if you go straight from Hundred and Eighth to Hundred and Sixth, that is my house on the south part of that corner. So I have three concerns, drainage, safety, and traffic. I guess there's no particular order in my mind as to which is the worst, but I'll start with drainage. So because of the slope of Dover between Hundred and Eighth and Hundred and Sixth, already when we have a big storm, that water flows all the way down the street, halfway into the open space, and halfway into the basement of my house. If you expand the roadway on Dover and widen it, that increases the impervious surface, which increases the amount of drainage that I'm going to get from any type of storm that comes along, that's concerning for me. The other thing about drainage is there's no curb and gutter on Dover, and if I heard the gentleman correctly, the curb and gutter and sidewalk was going to be on Old Wadsworth, not on Dover. I can tell from the drawings if that is or isn't correct. Without that curb and gutter, of course, then, you know, the water just goes to the lowest point on the roadway and to the lowest point on the surrounding land. So that's my concern about drainage. My concern about traffic. traffic, I think the lady is before me highlighted in a beautiful way. We have traffic problems today because of the massive development going on just north of 108th, that whole area that used to be open when I bought my property in 97, that now has lots of buildings and townhouses and condos, et cetera, et cetera. So the traffic on 108th between Old Wadsworth and Wadsworth Parkway is currently significant. If you're coming out of Dover going north, trying to turn left on 108th, you cannot do it during daytime traffic. Then there's more and more people who are cutting through Dover to 106th to get around the traffic jam that happens at 108th and Wadsworth, Old Wadsworth. And then that creates the problem of the S curve that goes under the railway bridge on Old Wadsworth as well. So we just, we're not set up to handle large amounts of traffic anywhere in those, in those streets. Further, I'm concerned about traffic. So we have a very tight corner at 106th and Dover. The corner is so tight that if semi-trucks come along and try and make it, they often have to back all the way back to Old Wadsworth to get out of there because they cannot make that corner. It's just too, too tight. So if they're going to develop, they should develop a roadway that is compatible with the people that exist there now in the residential environment. 108th increased traffic, we already talked about that. S curve, we've already talked about that. Cut through on 106th, I don't believe that you can ask 189 people in a business to please not take the shortcut home. The shortcut's not going to be coming out on Dover onto 108th, whether you're going east or west. There's just not enough roadway for the traffic volume. We have in our community elders who are in their 80s and above and of course aren't here because this is a nighttime meeting. We have new families with little babies. There is no curb. There is no gutter. People play in the streets. It is a significant safety risk, maybe not for myself, but certainly for my neighbors. So this is all aggravated by decreased visibility as well when you go on 108th onto Dover or Dover to 108th or 106th to Old Wadsworth. We have visibility problems now. You cannot see around that corner to save your life. I think there needs to be some civil work done if a project like this, of this magnitude, is going to be imposed on a rural residential neighborhood that's known for its large lots and people who've lived there for decades and decades. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Jen, did we get any emails or voicemails?
Nothing received after the Packet went out and no voicemails to be played.
Thank you. And did you have a comment?
Is now the correct time to address the public comment?
I think so.
Okay, I took some notes, so bear with me while I read from my phone here. The notes I took were, mentioned were drainage, traffic safety, and use relative to the gas station. To start with the latter, for use relative to the gas station, we heard concerns over gas station, safety, and EV stations. That project is actually, will be under a separate entitlement and is outside of the scope of this particular PDP. So I would just, we can provide that information to whoever needs it for that particular meeting. Because I understand that that project is contingent on this project and at that time, maybe those concerns can be addressed by the commercial user. I think QuickTrip is the brand currently. For drainage, we heard drainage concerns during heavy rain events. Currently, the site is best described, and I'm not an engineer, sheet drains, active water flow from the ball campus through a culvert onto the site and it just effectively is flowing into Walnut Creek uncontrolled by, the development has been designed with the drainage study taken in mind and will actually be converting those uncontrolled sheet drains into controlled drainage from the ball site across the property, detained in our detention pond, and then it flows out and around an easement through the Lao Buddhist temple and then into a controlled, open conveyance system into Walnut Creek. So the drainage study has actually had us route that uncontrolled drainage to the west of the site and down to Walnut Creek in a controlled manner.
It takes care of the property, but doesn't take care of the city's main road.
Correct. That, I just wanted to address your concerns on the drainage. And then the last was traffic and safety. I heard three different public comments on that. All traffic movements for the planned development have been evaluated and designed by licensed traffic engineers and all traffic movements are following best and current safety standards and were considered in the evaluation of the effective development. So all intersectional movements at all three access points were designed by traffic engineers, taking into account current project, current traffic flows, projected traffic flows, and an attempt to provide the safest vehicular interactions in those intersections. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a question for Senior Planner Kaza. What are the plans for improvements to 108th eastbound? Or are there any?
Yes, Commissioner. So while it's kind of out of the scope of the PDP with the ODP that they're processing and could be administratively approved, should the PDP be approved by City Council, on 108th Avenue, they'll be adding more asphalt for an additional lane, which will then turn into a right turn lane only onto Dover Street, as well as additional pavement for, I believe it's a five-foot wide bike lane, and then curb and gutter, tree lawn, and then a sidewalk. And then it goes into their property from there. Along Dover Street, they will be widening that road. So the flow line, which is the curb and gutter line, lines up with the existing curb and gutter line on Dover Street on the north side of 108th. From the curb and gutter, then tree lawn, then a sidewalk, and then it's their property line. At the very south edge of their property, on the ODP, it shows that they'll be installing a storm drain there at the very, very south edge of the property. So that'll capture all of the sheet flow off of Dover Street from the Crown West, and then that will all pass into their detention pond and then will go into the new regional pipe system that the developer is going to install and pay for. So that was, I did want to address that one. We do have included in the PDP a requirement for, if there is a future gas station to be built here, they need to look at incorporating emerging vehicle technologies. So that would include things like EV, and we could interpret it to include other things as needed. For the risk of a plane crash, these will be underground storage tanks. We don't permit above-ground storage tanks for gas. I'm not an expert in plane crashes or fire risk on an underground storage tank, but I imagine that's a lot lower as it's underground rather than an above-ground tank. And then we are very well aware of the concerns of traffic on 108th Avenue and the width of 108th Avenue. With a development application such as this, we cannot force a developer to install and improve all of Dover Street or all of 106th Avenue or all of 108th Avenue from Wadsworth Boulevard to Wadsworth Parkway. That would be out of our authority to do.
I had one more quick question. What are future plans for 108th east of Dover? Are there any plans for improvements?
Yeah, so our transportation mobility plan does anticipate potentially widening that out to a four-lane arterial road and then including bicycle lanes on it. Without Heath here, I couldn't tell you where that sits on our capital improvement project plan, but that is the improvement that we have in our transportation mobility plan.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up with that, the, for 106th Avenue, knowing that there's concern that people are going to take the shortcut down Dover Street, has the city considered any, any requirements to be put on this PDP as far as not, how do we disallow the traffic there? I guess that's the, I'm not saying it right, but that's what I'm, how do we discourage them? And maybe it needs to be more regulatory than even, than just a private contract. And I'm just wondering if the city is, has looked at that or, well, with, because obviously there, even though this is the PDP and this is just entitlements for what could be built here and the ODP is going to determine what actually gets built here to explain to our audience. This would be, if you have any enlightenment on that, I would like to hear what the city's position is.
Sure, Commissioner. So I think there's a couple of options we could do, whether it be you guys making a recommendation to include that on the PDP or just something I bring back to the ODP design. We could look at having them install certain signs on their property and maybe even out in the public right-of-way directing trucks to head north on Dover Street. I believe portions of Dover and portions of 106th are in the county, so we don't have jurisdictional control over them. So I'm not sure what signs we could install on the roadway there. This portion of Dover, though, is in the city, so we could potentially put signs to direct them like that. I think it's a little misleading to add to the sign something like "Road Closed" or "No Outlet" or something like that. Then I think we tend to stay away from those, especially because they can confuse emergency vehicles. So I think probably, that's probably the best recourse we could get. And again, it's a public road and I don't think, I don't think we could stop any of the 189 people from taking a shortcut.
Could we do something like no commercial vehicles signs?
I think we could, as long as it was our right-of-way. I can take all of these down and bring it up to our transportation engineer, engineering team and see what they would want to get on board with and what they could have the developer install.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, because that seems like that would be more of an ODP requirement than a PDP, though, right? As far as that, from a, I'm just thinking from a procedural standpoint there.
Correct. We would generally handle these on ODPs.
And, and you're saying that we would, we're not going to get another bite at this apple as an ODP from a, from a commission or from a, or a city council for that matter? Because this can be administratively approved?
Correct. They do currently have their official development plan in for review. It is only the industrial building, so the retail commercial use is not identified on that. It's identified to be a future later phase. Based off what they have on that plan, it requests no exceptions and it's under the size threshold for an ODP to be reviewed. So it could be administratively approved.
Yeah, that's good. And one other thing for the, I guess for the ODP especially, knowing, I know that Dover Street, or at least, I don't know if the entire right-of-ways and ours are just to the half, but right there, the southeast corner of 108th and Dover, there are a lot of trees there that, that make visibility very difficult. That might be something that should be looked at as well. I know that there's, the applicant's not making any improvements there, but I'm not sure if that's a, if we have to interface with the county on that, because that's, that seems to be a concern.
Yeah, I think they might be in our site triangle generally for those, for those roads. So I'm not, I also do not know off the top of my head if that is in the city limits. The property is not, but whether the trees are within the public right-of-way and the city's limits, I'm unsure. I will bring it up to our traffic engineering team as well.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Commissioner Tomacek, may I interrupt? Chair Bossher, would you ask the audience if there's anyone else that would like to speak? And then if not, let's go ahead and close that public testimony, please.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Can I add to my earlier testimony?
Sure.
Thank you for that opportunity to add Trudy Forsyth again, 8460 West 106th. I appreciate that the Crown of Dover to the west is taking care of for drainage, but what about the Crown of Dover to the east? Doesn't, I don't think that's being resolved in this drainage. And I understand there's a process with PDPs and ODPs and so on and so forth, but you're allowing growth to happen in a neighborhood that is constrained, I believe, by county differences. I know 106th is not owned all by Westminster. I know it's also unincorporated Jefferson County, and that adds to the complexity of it. But it does not add to the rightness to make it right for the citizens who live there. I encourage you to resolve those differences so we can fix this whole neighborhood traffic flow, because there's so much expansion, as we all know, going on across the whole Colorado Front Range. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob, did you want to address her question or is that for another time?
Sure, Chairperson. So right now, under the plan that they have, there would not be any, I guess, flow captured from the Crown. The Crown's probably going to be reestablished with a new pavement. So I'm not sure exactly where that would fall, but there's not any, with their ODP, there's no plan to capture or treatment of the storm, storm flows from that east side.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. And...
I am sorry to interrupt again. Would we ask the audience one more time for speakers and then let's close the public testimony? Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, it seems there are no other folks wishing to testify. Is that correct? At this time, I will close the public hearing and entertain questions from the Commission. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on that previous question, there's also not planning to be any expansion on the other side of the Crown of Dover Street. Is that correct?
Correct. So we're not having them add anything to that east, to the east side of the road.
They're only, so every, all the new pavement that they're adding, they're, they're collecting plus, plus some of the existing pavement drainage as well.
Yeah, yes, they are. So this, this property is in a really weird location. They catch drainage flow from the Ball property and then they catch drainage from the industrial properties directly north of them, as well as all the sheet flow onto their property. And so they'll be capturing that in a, one, one conveyance line that will convey all of those off-sites, past their property, down to Walnut Creek. And then everything that's onsite and anything that's added from 108th and Dover will be caught by their storm drainage system, passed through their detention pond, and then go out to that regional conveyance.
Yeah, perfect. So it is, it would be an improvement over existing conditions even before pre-development conditions, it sounds like.
Yes, that's the intention with the project, is to capture all those uncaptured flows.
Fair, thank you.
All right, at this time, unless there are questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Tomacek?
Jacob, what limits the ability to turn right into, off of Wadsworth into the property? Wadsworth Parkway as opposed to Wadsworth Boulevard?
So if that's CDOT right-of-way, so they'd have to get a CDOT access from that.
Because it's Highway 121 there as opposed to local road.
The city has also had some reservations about the types of access that would be allowed onto Wadsworth, being that it's a 55 mile per hour highway at that section. We have some concerns about where placement would be there and then additionally with people trying to make, let's say, a right turn onto Wadsworth Parkway headed north and then immediately make a U-turn at 108th to go south back on Wadsworth Parkway. So we have not supported certain access points on that occasion and CDOT has agreed with us, so.
Okay. And has anybody looked, anybody within the city looked at what the vehicle loading capabilities are for Dover Street and 106th? And the reason I ask is, at least one of the public folks have asked about tractor-trailers ending up going, attempting to go back through there. We're talking about box-sized trucks for the development. Can the road even take that kind of loading? And if not, what considerations are there to restrict the access?
I'm not, from a weight, I assume you mean from a weight load perspective. I'm not sure that our traffic studies go into coverage of weight limits on roads. Just, no, that's not my expertise, Commissioner. I'm happy to sit here after the hearing and thumb through it with you.
You don't need to, but as far as...
And I apologize, Heath isn't here tonight to answer that question.
No, it's probably a question that Keith and the utility folks are going to need to answer for you for the remainder of this development, should it go through. Because I agree with some of the public... Because I agree with some of the public folks that trucks go wherever they feel like, not where the signs tell them not to. So perhaps some better signage, some increased consideration of improving the road, so on, needs to get bumped up both for us and for the county to address those kinds of questions.
Okay. I think it's time for us to get a motion on the table here. Would anyone like to give us a motion on this? Commissioner Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Plan and Commission recommend the City Council approve the preliminary development plan for Mandalay Gardens, Track 10. This recommendation is based on a finding that the preliminary development plan is supported by the criteria set forth in Sections 11-5-14 of the Westminster Municipal Code. I just would like to remark that, of course, I haven't had a lot to say this evening, but that's because I believe that our applicants are following the procedures and doing everything right. So I would like to see this, I would, I will be supporting this motion.
Okay. Can we get a second on this motion? Commissioner Mayo.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Now, if there's any discussion, let's go ahead and put it on the table. See, Larry had a good comment. Any others? Commissioner Carpenter.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo Commissioner Dunn's comments as well. While the applicant has met our code from my perspective, I will be supporting this. And, you know, my request is just that, all of our concerns on the engineering side, I know we're all playing engineers, I know that's my day job, but we're all playing engineers up here for you. And we just want to make sure that we're, when this gets developed, that we make the best thing possible and we can address as many of their concerns. Because last thing we want is more people cutting through, cutting through on a 10-foot-wide road through there, or trucks getting stuck or causing property damage back there, things of that nature. So whatever we can do, I know we're limited because of working with Jefferson County, but maybe, maybe that's an opportunity for us to work with them to see how we can make that better.
And I would like to add real quickly that I am going to support this motion also, but I would like to ask the city, since we won't see the ODP, to consider signage on this, on the perimeters of this property restricting truck traffic. I understand that jurisdictions are involved that are not just the city, but that might go a long way towards keeping semis off the Dover and 106th right-of-way. So that's my only recommendation. Any other comments? Seeing none, I will call the question. Do we do a roll call on this, Jennifer?
One second, Chairman.
I'm sorry. I didn't see your mic.
No, it's good. So I echo some of the same sentiments as my colleagues who are here today. I know that the applicant has done their due diligence and in terms of the traffic analysis and that the report indicates, you know, that they're meeting the standards. But I am still, I want to voice my concern about that. I'm still concerned about the traffic flow in the area, despite them meeting the criteria, because I know they've done their due diligence and that. But just, I mean, I grew up in the area. That traffic flow is concerning in my mind. But with that sentiment said, I will also be supporting this initiative.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I will call the question.
Commissioner Zhang.
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor. Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair Carpenter.
Aye.
Vice Chair Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Mayo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Chair Bosscher.
Yes.
Chair Bosscher is in favor. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. And Commissioner Tomacek.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor.
So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We have one other piece of business that we need to attend to, and that is the approval of the meeting minutes for the September, let's see, what was it? 26th meeting?
Ms., excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we passed that at the beginning of the meeting.
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go. See? I gotta quit drinking this soda. It's just killing me. All right. Well, with that in mind, do we have any old business? Any miscellaneous business? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you for your contribution, gentlemen. And Jennifer, thank you for leading us again. We appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.